It's taken, normally it's when they come in for a permit, they pay the impact fee, the builder pays the impact fee, the city has it. As each lots take it down.
As Todd noted, we collect too much, then we have to square up.
Yeah.
Which, I've never, I personally haven't heard of anyone.
I mean.
That happy with anyone.
Yeah.
Take a lot, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
Typically, the process to build stuff is a long process to, if you see something drastic like that happening, then you change the process.
I was gonna say to your point, Mark, we would just immediately just go start this process again.
Change the numerator and.
And to Andy's point, add a new capital investment projects that we didn't identify already, or change the, change the numerator.
Yeah, okay.
Normally that's all, if it's with the developer, it's gonna be in the development agreement that's negotiated, various other financial aspects.
Right, now the other thing that didn't come up is Todd, my, I didn't see the CIP list exactly, but I thought we talked before. Those big numbers, those millions of dollars include the water lines on the developer's property, the lift stations on the developer's property. It's, it's all the infrastructure on the developer's own land, along with stuff that's offsite. Whereas me, I've always, the developer, what I was paying for his own infrastructure. And the offsite stuff is the stuff that we're worried about, right?
Correct.
So that's why that number, does everybody understand, so when he calculated everything, it was as if, as if we had to pay for putting in land plans, water lines. And land plans, lift station, everything in the land plan on our nickel. That's in that impact fee. But we're not doing that. If we have a developer, we're not paying for theirs. We didn't pay to put your water line in your house, you did that, your builder did that, we didn't. So that max number is a worst-case doomsday scenario that we had to put in all the infrastructure. So they're gonna get credit for putting in their own lift stations, their own water lines, their own sewer lines, which will drop that number down. Okay? That makes sense? We're, we're not gonna pay. City didn't pay to put your water line on your own property. Right? But we did pay to put in the well over here. So that money, the impact fee, is gonna go to the offsite stuff, right?
Right. And that typically, like you're saying, would be worked out in the development agreement, because they are gonna have some lift stations and, and some things that they're gonna have to oversize. The water lines are most likely gonna be what they need to be, but wastewater, the forced main, it's on their land, but they're gonna have to oversize it for people outside of their. And so that's where the engineers get together and come up, okay, what, what size do you really need to put in for your development? What's the difference in the cost? And that all gets worked out in the development agreement.
But, but those numbers, you shouldn't be fighting it, like 1.9, it's really not 1.9 million. That includes the stuff on their own land. It's, it's less than that, right? To expand a sewer plant, it's not 1.9 million, or whatever it was, that, that's not our half, it's, it's lower, okay? So, okay. Any other questions? Alrighty. Everybody good, audience? Any, any questions? Alright, hopefully we'll wrap this up next month.
Thanks, Todd.
Sure.
Thank you very much, Todd, we're Stewart.
Great.
He, uh.
Get to the end of the process now.
Yeah. They gave him a laugh.
It's Thursday night football, you can say it. Oh, Todd, you got the well study.
Okay.
Sure.
Thought you were getting that.
That was your chance to say Stewart's got it.
So all we did was we just put it on the agenda again, it's out of consideration, I don't, just a discussion, it's.
I had a couple of questions, I missed the meeting.
Okay.
Um, so to summarize then, my way of thinking about this, there are two options for wells. One's a plexi, which is where our, our wells are now, about fifteen hundred feet roughly, which is our two wells here. And the other option is this twin forks or twin pines or whatever, which is the Trinity.
Right.
When I was at TML, some of the people were telling me about Trinity, one of the problems was the water is, needs to be treated. It's not, it's got a lot of minerals, as they put in quotes. The other problem was they said it was hot. It was the temperature, we had to actually cool it, but it was, it was hotter than your ambient water. They were saying that was a problem. They said you had to actually have cooling when you treated it to, to. But anyway, I just, that's what people have told me.
The well, the geologists did not bring that up, so I will ask them about that, I have not heard that about the temperatures.
I didn't think about temperature either, but they swore to me that was a problem, was, now, they weren't in the metroplex right here.
Right.
But, so basically to summarize then, we have really good water that we could pump out and drink right now at fifteen hundred feet. Problem is, it doesn't put out three hundred gallons a minute. The crappy water down below, there's a ton of it. Deeper, it's crappy water, but it pumps a lot.
Right. It would be basically right at the.
Two trade-offs.
Right at the threshold for CCQ, or we could expect that based on other wells in the area.
Sorry, what was the first?
It, it would, it would be right at the threshold of the CCQ water quality, um.
Yeah.
Regulations. Based on, that's what we can expect. You know, you never know until you, you go down there, but based on other wells in the area, that's.
That's everything I've heard about Trinity.
Right.
The amount of water, though, we do have another variable, we can correct it with storage.
Right. So I mean, my impression was that, that the water quality is, is key.
Right.
Having a lot of unusable water is not helpful.
Yeah, I, I, it's gonna be an interesting one, if we really get into it to the point when we have to drill a well, to really get into, do we wanna do that treatment? You know, if we have water temperature, or do we wanna do storage, and then manage our seasonal differences with storage by taking off line, managing fines?
No, I think that's, I think it's gonna be, I think it's gonna be interesting, because, you know, to me, that's, you know.
That looks quite the, quite the dilemma.
It's an interesting trade-off, right? It's never simple.
It's gonna be a good stuff.
But I don't wanna have, yeah, I just, you know, less moving parts for us than that, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so it was kind of my summary of, well, I thought the trade-offs were, right?
Right, I think that was a good summary. I think with the, the amount of demand we're proposing right now, I think the plexi would get you what you need. Like Clint said, we could manage the peaks with just more storage.
And the other thing, Todd, that I talked about too, is that geologist is gonna be really conservative. So he's gonna be under, more likely, he's always gonna be under on what else, what, what do you think the well will do?
Right.
So if we're gonna, if we're gambling.
Well, we also know that's a plexi over here.
Right.
So we got another plexi there at Little Elm, and I don't know what Aqua Texas was.
What is that, plexi?
Is that the plexi in Aqua Texas, dude? So we're surrounded by plexies, so I mean, it seems like that's.
That, that's the.
A mixing purpose, that's true for us.
That's the other reason for not to go to a plexi, then we have a bunch of wells that are already tapped into that are here once, so it's gonna be a good discussion.
There's also talk of putting in an emergency interconnect with Little Elm to get you through some sort of.
That's true too.
Heat and air or catastrophic event.
Yeah, no, it's surface water, so then.
That's another consideration too, is that with the groundwater district, we may only get one shot, and then we get one permit.
Right back to my class, see my class things? Okay.
Same question to the board, this is the same one, same board that we just here.
Yes.
So nothing, nothing's changed.
Nothing's changed, I'll go, I'll ask about the water temperature, um, they didn't bring that up to me, and it wasn't mentioned after the board, so.
Yeah.
I asked Linda to put it on the agenda, knowing that Todd would be here, so if there was anybody, had another month to think about it, wanted to ask questions, we could.
Okay. Any questions? Any question, Andy? Are we good? Just this, there.
Thanks, thanks, Todd.
Thanks, Todd, thanks for coming out, thanks. Alright, next up, we have a series of ordinances, uh, basically, what these ordinances are, is that we need to, uh, our ordinance is having them, the fact that our ordinances apply in the extraterritorial jurisdiction. Following, uh, the court ruling, uh, cities can't extend their building codes, ATJ, we can't do that now. So we just have to make a revision, so we're revising in a couple of places the ordinances, it's only, I think, the caption at the top.
Yeah, the where as is really.
Yeah, it's basically the caption at the top that says where the ordinance applies, so we're striking the words ETJ on that. All the building codes, everything is identical, we're not changing any building codes.
Just only the enforcement area.
Just, just the area where it applies, and, um, so we need to do that, so it's a series of, basically all of our building and building ordinances, um, just changing those, those, those two words, extra, three words, extra and below those things, okay?
I just got one, I just got one question, did you do the other ones?
I'm sorry?
Were you the one who edited? So the, um, the blue edits, those are the ones given to the ETJ, those other edits that aren't there, those are just old, is that what those were? They look like they were found prior version or something. And there were some areas that lines were crossed out, but I'm assuming that was there prior to whatever you did, right? I'm just, I guess my question is, if nothing else changed, you just.
Some of the only edits, I think I know, the only edits are blue. Throughout the document, if you see anything that's in black, that's underlined or striked, that's actually requiring the code itself, the international code. The only edits ever, the only edits we're discussing tonight are blue.
Okay, so again, we're not changing any of the substantive in the text, it's just the application.
Do you have any questions? No.
Okay, so I'd like to just kind of roll through these, um. If we're ready. Andy, Andy Frowns, can we do a.
Irons. Can we do.
Did I hear this three ten million?
Yeah.
Okay, I have a motion to approve, or motion to approve the residential code as amended, um, striking the enforcement, the ETJ as the enforcement area.
Okay, I have a motion, second by right, all in favor? Thank you. Next up, dinner hour four, plumbing code. Same. This, Clint is going.
Motion to approve the plumbing code as amended, uh, to remove the ETJ as an enforcement area, say.
I have a motion of second, all in favor? Thank you. Next up, the chemical code.
Right, motion to approve the chemical code as amended to remove the ETJ as an enforcement area, say.
Motion of second, all in favor? Very good, consideration of the fuel and gas code.
Alright, motion to approve the fuel, gas, uh, ordinance, uh, as amended to remove the ETJ as an enforcement area, say.
Motion of second, all in favor? Thank you. I consider some fire code ordinance.
Motion to approve the fire code ordinance as, has amended to remove the ETJ as an enforcement area, say.
Motion of second, all in favor? Consideration of energy conservation code.
Alright, motion to approve the energy conservation code as amended to remove the ETJ as an enforcement area, say.
Motion of second, all in favor? There, okay, there we go. Please don't trade raises much here. Okay, uh, next up, the electrical code.
Alright, uh, motion to approve the electrical code as amended to remove the ETJ as an enforcement area, say.
Motion of second, all in favor? Okay, thank you very much, guys, that's, uh, that was important, we got that as a priority. We're heading to what I need to receive, I can do things quickly. Uh, next up, number ten, is consideration of resolution for town attorney opinions. So this was a resolution, and I asked Linda to kind of work out, the idea being that we wanted to have, give Andy some direction on what to do when we request official opinions of the attorney. And the issue, the tension, if you will, and kind of model is, we don't wanna discourage council members from asking opinions of the attorney, but we also don't wanna have attorney opinions floating around the universe that are confidential. So there's this tension between maintaining confidentiality and limiting things running around, which are confidential to the attorney client.
I was gonna say confidentiality between attorney clients.
Right, and then having the council, because Andy represents the city, we are all one. He doesn't work for me, he doesn't give opinions to me, he gives opinions to the city council. And that's the way that it works, I'm the client, Dan's the client, we're all the clients, Clint's the client. So it's giving direction to that, while at the same time maintaining some sort of records documentations Linda has to maintain for public information, and she has to maintain records. So we have to have kind of those, those three tensions going on, and if I ask Andy for an opinion, it comes back to me. Linda's wanting to charge records, she has to know about it for records maintenance. So I asked Linda to basically come up with a, uh, with a, with a policy, so.
I, I was that.
Hey, come on, I'm not used to driving. Let me say, I'm not doing anything, okay?
Yeah, I'm not, sure. It's great enough, look, I'm powerful, didn't think.
Oh, wait, oh, I have.
Motion, I think.
Alright, so this is the, this is the ordinance, if everybody can see it. I don't think I heard, so basically, Linda, why don't you take it?
Uh, it's, it's just very basic and straightforward. Anybody on the council requesting an attorney, um, opinion from Andy, makes the request, Andy's gonna answer and reply to me. I'll maintain them all in my office, and as soon as I get, um, the opinion from Andy, I'll notify all, everybody on the council that there's one, um, in the office. You can see it in there. And that way we don't have to worry about a bunch of emails and somebody accidentally disclosing something.
Yeah, some of the, some of the attorney stuff is not only attorney-client, it's legally confidential. So if a developer gives us information, hey, I'd like to build this, or I'd like to think about doing that, and I send Andy and say, look, here's some plans about what are you trying to do, and what do you think? Those plans are confidential under state law. Development, you, you, I can't, you can't even get a new public information request, get. We tried to get the well information from North Texas Groundowners, just to know what wells are in our neighborhood. They said you can't get, we won't tell you. They wouldn't tell us how deep they, they said that's proprietary. They put in the, the person that paid for those wells to put them in, that's their information. It's confidential. They have the documents, they won't give them to us. Because business-related stuff, economic development stuff is confidential by law. Am I saying that right, Andy? So it, it's not even that I don't want Andy or, you know, you to know about it, because me and Andy talking, it's legally, if it got out, that's a violation of state law. Okay? Even if it's innocent, like it's no big deal, I don't, I don't care if you know about it, we can't release it, it's not allowed, okay? So, um, that's why this intermingling between some stuff is legally confidential. It can't be released, and other things are confidential, because attorney-client, they're, it's confidential that way.
Let's discuss the stuff that's not confidential. Could be a majority who are discussing. I guess I'm gonna address this to you. If we ask you an, an opinion, which you're gonna give us a fact law, that's not confidential, it's couldn't be a fact law. Why, why would we wanna keep that from our taxpayers?
Well, if you ask me an opinion, depending on what it is, most times, that's gonna be attorney-client communication that is privileged. Because you're the client, I'm the attorney, I'm giving you a legal opinion upon whatever the circumstances is. So many times, that's gonna be privileged communication.
So the, the client is us?
Yes.
If the client chose to disclose that, is there any, is there any concern on your side? I mean, is there, just make sure that, just make sure that everybody understands, attorney-client privilege, like, it's to protect the client. Is that correct?
Or is it also to get a client ownership?
Client ownership. Well, um, you know, if we go and ask a question about, what does this law mean to us? Factually, and we decide to disclose that.
Yeah.
Um, A, how would we decide that? Because we're, we're passing the ordinance that says everything's confidential, taxpayers made on level per se. How would we make a decision to say this is.
I don't think that's what it says.
Option number three there says that, in order to maintain confidentiality as required by law, which is the thing I'm gonna ask. Uh, the opinions attorney shall only be available for review in the town hall, and they can only be available to review from the people sitting here. So how, how would we disclose a normal question of law?
Yeah. Um, or an issue, yeah, privileged communication.
No, 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 that's a statement of fact. I get, hey, if we've got a problem on our hands and kind of figure it out, and there's, you know, privileged information in there that you can't, I get that. I'm talking about the ones that aren't that, I'm talking about the statement of facts, simple questions, and those types of things that are, you know, that we're asking you. How, if we afford, if we do this, how do we ever, how do we disclose that to our taxpayers?
Well. I don't, I don't wanna mix up apples and oranges. If there's something that's confidential, that, that confidential, confidentiality between attorney-client can be waived by the client.
Yep.
The better way that that is waived is if the council collectively voted and said, we're gonna release this to the public. That way the client, the body politics knowingly waives a confidential matter.
And that makes sense.
Yeah.
So, so the body makes, makes the motion. So the concern comes in is, if every time we, we ask you a question. And everyone that comes back to us goes back to Linda, because I, I'm reading this that, you know, if, if Clint or anybody goes to you, everything you're gonna come back to is an opinion or statement of fact, it's gonna come through this process.
No, it's only if you request an official opinion from Andy. I call Andy on the phone and say, look, Andy approves our agenda. If I call Andy and say, Andy, you know, are you okay with the wording if I do this? It's not general questions, it's not operating questions, it's if you say, I wanna get a legal opinion from Andy, a written legal opinion, that, that we're gonna use to say whether or not we can do A or B. It's not even communication that we have with Andy. It's, it's an official opinion letter from Andy, if you say, Andy, what do you write an opinion? So at least my concern, Dan.
Obviously, so my, my question to Dan again is, an official opinion that is clearly a statement of fact, which has no confidentiality.
Well, then why are you asking?
Because if, if we pass this thing, it tells you that we would need to vote to give the taxpayers information they should have. And I have a concern with that. Now, I, I get if you say it's confidential, gotta make it confidential, I get that, and if we wanna waive it, we gotta vote, like, I get that. But if this information is not confidential.
Yeah.
Where do we have a right to keep it from the people? I don't get that.
Well, if, I don't know, I don't know what. If I'm giving an opinion and then deals with underlying facts, say for example, a plat. Plat's gonna be public information, if it's, if it's filed in record, that's public information, right? But if somebody's, if, if somebody is asking me to give an opinion on the legality of that plat, or the passing of that plat, um, that could be different. To me, I don't care if the plat's provided or not, my opinion about it, I do care about. That's how, so I would, I would parse that.
Okay, yeah, no, I, I, I get that, right, so if it's confidential, keep it confidential, and only vote to waive it by voting against, right?
I'll say that again?
Yeah, so if it's confidential data in that opinion, and even if the asking of it is confidential thing, then, then vote to release it, right?
It's up to y'all.
If you want it to, if you, if, no, if you want to release it, that's fine, or you vote not to release it, right? Um, so, so two things, how would you, let's go back to the thing that drove this, right? You and I had a conversation about, uh, you know, ethics, right? We, we took a look at the bunch of towns that are around here, and we said, hey, here's policies that are out there, and we had a conversation about how could we, you know, establish some guideline ethical things for the town council. You and I went back and forth, and then we came up with a, so using that example, there's nothing confidential in that. I mean, restating the existing Texas law is not confidential information.
But then, Dan.
No, that's not accurate.
No, okay.
Any, any, any communication between me and any council member, it can be confidential, just because it's attorney-client communication, and you're asking a legal opinion.
Perfect. So what, so that means that every time we ask an opinion, it's automatically confidential.
Well, that's how I understand this. I understand this is, it's, it's asking, some, a council person is asking me to give a written opinion on something. Not necessarily, and what I, what I understand this is, it doesn't deal with.
It doesn't say that, though.
Okay, well, maybe that's, that needs to be clarified.
Yeah, I'm good with that, so it says there are all requests. So if I see you out in the parking lot, and I say, hey, I got a question for you, you give an opinion on this, can you give it to me?
That's in a crossword official, right?
That would be.
Dan, here's, here's what we're trying to parse out, Dan.
I, I, I don't know, I'm asking y'all for direction on how you want me to do it.
There's, there's, Dan, so let me, let me say where we're going with this. So it makes no sense to ask Andy an opinion about something which is a straight fact of law. Asking Andy, you know, does the city council have six members or four members? Something that's a no-brainer, trivial, you know, simple thing, like, and then asking him to write an opinion on that, yeah, we could release that because it's, it's pointless, it was, it was something you could read in the local government code. For him to give an opinion on something, now, suppose I say, Andy, we're thinking about using eminent domain to acquire some land in front of the town entrance so we can make the thing. How would we go about that or whatever? Clearly, that's confidential, we would not want that telegraphed. We're thinking about using eminent domain, we're thinking about.
You can't say you wouldn't want that telegraphed, you may not wanna telegraph it.
We would not, you, you don't negotiate, you, you've got to figure out your options when you're talking about real property, and you do that confidential.
All I'm gonna ask is, how could we, if we pass this ordinance, and it says all, I'm sorry, your thing is, all requests are immediately confidential. Which I'm, I'm not necessarily, but it says all, all requests for official payments. My question is, how do we release them? Your answer was we need to vote on it.
That would be the best way.
That'd be the best way, and I'll go with the best way. Uh, so the question is, how would we even say that? Like, hey, I wanna have a vote to release the confidential information, and how, what's the, like, how would you go about doing that?
How would you vote?
Yeah, like, how would you, how would you put that on the agenda?
Yeah, so how I would do that is, what I would recommend doing is, is you put in an executive session for attorney-client communication about whatever the topic is. You meet an executive session, you talk about it, and if, if, if it's something that y'all want to vote on, you come out of executive session, and somebody makes a motion to dis, to disclose this information to the public, second, all in favor? And if it passes, then it would be disclosed, if it doesn't pass, it remains confidential.
By, by default, everything you do is gonna be confidential at this point?
Well, why don't, are you asking, was my here to be written? That'd be a better clarification, or to be official?
Well, no, I said, here's the problem, if we go with, if we go with written, then the problem is, I could ask for verbal. I mean, I could ask for, I mean, you know, everybody.
So I think we all encompassing that, right?
But that, yeah, but we, we do verbal ones, the concern, if you do it orally, that's not a concern about confidential information running around. There's an email out there saying, we're gonna try and acquire this piece of land for a well. You know, or we're looking to acquire this, or we're looking to do, um, you know, this developer wants to know if we were willing to do two houses per acre, if they'll give us a million dollars to put in a park. I mean, th- there's information out there that, yeah, if I, if you do it orally, I don't have a problem with that, because there's no, there's no problem with that being disseminated outside the, the envelope. You're on your own, you can not do that. But that's the way we operate now, right? Under the armor code, yeah.
Probably would have, and I'm, I'm gonna put a, put a revision on that. No, I gotta tell you, I'm not comfortable with, um, with keeping information from the taxpayer, I'm just not comfortable with that.
We're just talking circle here, so I mean, unless there's any new, new information, or somebody.
Do we, do we wanna add the word written opinion here? Is that? My concern is with the emails, that's my concern, is about having, and I know Andy is concerned, Andy, when he gives us an opinion.
To disseminate material, right?
Well, Andy's, I mean, it's, it's fair, for Andy to write an opinion, if he's writing it to me, I, it's not right for me to then disseminate that to, he didn't write it to the others. It's like being an author of, of, of a works, I don't, if I write a letter to you, I'm not writing it to twenty-seven other people, you don't get to CC that. And so, I mean, that's the problem, is, you know, we need to be able to make sure that it's, we're square on. If Andy's conversing, that that doesn't get out in the universe, then I'll be knowing that.
And it's also, it becomes available to everyone, and it's, it's a controlled source.
I mean, it's your opinion, alright?
Yeah, but the, the confidentiality is no problem, the confidentiality is with the town. And I think that's why I asked the question, being to establish that, so it's, it's not your fault, it's remaining confidential, but not to protect you. You're good, it's, it's us. So and then again, what I was questioning is, under what circumstances would the town need to keep this stuff from the people? And I get certain things, making deals, you're gonna acquire a piece of property, you know, I get that, this is very all-encompassing. And I would, I would warn of the dangers of having everything being confidential that people don't know about.
Andy, is your concern, okay, so it's one thing for you to say that the city council can decide, we have the authority to release any opinion you write. We do, we have that authority. The question is then, scratch that. What do you want? Are you comfortable with us, would you rather have us ask you? To me, I, I, I would ask you and say, Andy, there's something on the agenda about potentially releasing your opinion about X, what do you think? Do you want your name associated with this floating around the universe, or?
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna back anything I put in writing. I'm gonna stand behind it, but it doesn't mean everything I say is open to the public.
It also doesn't.
I, I mean, I, our, our office gets a volume of phone calls from mayors and council members every day about a lot of different topics. We give opinions about a lot of things every single day. Sometimes we give opinions by email. Sometimes we give opinions by email, sometimes we give written memorandum opinions. So I think, I think it'd be fair to say, if a council member or mayor calls me, I think you're probably gonna keep that confidential, but you're not gonna call me unless you really want another answer for something that's pressing. If you want something in email, it's gonna be more important than something that's on the phone. And I would normally think you would keep that confidential. But that's up to you, if it's a, a written opinion. Cities deal with that differently. Some of the cities that I represent, if I give an opinion to one council person, then normally, that, not the same opinion will go to the mayor, and maybe the mayor protests it. And in this instance, you're saying, well, it should go to all council members, just so that everybody knows what's happening.
Yeah.
I mean, that's just, that's a matter of your individual policy, there's not a set way to do that, but most of the time, if you're asking for my opinion, it's probably gonna be on something that's more sensitive. It's not gonna be something that's necessarily public. But you're gonna do, use that opinion to make a decision about something, some public item. But it's, again, it's up to you. Normally, I'm gonna counsel you, if, if it's something you're asking my opinion, or you want my work product on, or my research, I want you to keep that confidential, that would normally be my recommendation. But it's your, it's your call if you want to disseminate that publicly, it's your call collectively.
Okay, I, I think a fact of law, we, we send it to TML. For instance, I've, I've got a question about, it, it dealt with the regulating, I think, the road. If we change, I don't know what section's transportation code it's in, I'm not gonna ask you, I know I'm at TML. I'd say, look, I, where in this section of transportation codes is it saying we can regulate four-wheelers on the street? Tell me where, where do I go? And their lawyers will tell me, you know, it's in section whatever. We use TML for kind of the no-brainers. I, I want to use your brain power, we paid for you, when it's something which is a grader, something where we need actual guidance. I, I don't want to use you for no-brainers. That, that's why, to me, by definition, you know, when you're in the loop, it's important. And, and with all the developer work that we've got going on, and a lot of it right now, and cities and agreements, things we're trying to work out, the school board, and and just lots of stuff where we can't, that information can't be disseminated right now, it's not ripe, it's not ready yet. There's too many moving parts.
Can we just verify, this, this document isn't creating and making this confidential, it's acknowledging a confidentiality that already exists.
That's, that's not the way it's written, it could be written that way, but it doesn't have, it didn't say that, if you read it.
So again, we're just going in circles, we're saying the same thing, so, I mean, I, I have everything for Ray, I don't have any trouble with it, Ray or Gary.
Do you want to, do you want to add anything?
I would, I would caution for you to listen today, only because I would say that the three times that I've gone to you, Andy, I guess three, every one of those came from citizen.